The E M. I want to call the board of all the regular meeting for Tuesday, February twenty first, two thousand and twenty-three. Uh, roll call, please.
Alderman Lightly.
President.
Alderman Wilkins. Alderman Rogers.
President.
Alderman Magley.
Yeah.
All righty, we have, if everybody stands for allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. At this time, I would open up all four comments from citizens. Things, I see no citizens here. I have closing comments from citizens.
Well, we did have.
I have got some calls, okay. We got.
Uh, guy on Singleton in Columbia Street, cats. What are we gonna do about them?
So, Mr. Stevenson called. Sandy did speak with him and um, kinda discussed with him what our non options are with um, community cats is what they call them. Any citizen can take, if they catch a cat, they can take it to the Humane Society to be spayed or neutered. It won't cost them anything, but they are required to bring the animal back to where they found the animal to release it back. Um, what that does is it kinda stops them from multiplying, um, but it's um, the problem is, is we're not allowed to take cats to the Humane Society anymore. It causes overpopulation at the shelter, it causes sickness and increased raging euthanasia. So, they will only take cats if they come from a citizen and only then if they are sick or injured. Otherwise, they will spare neuter them and then use, the citizen will have to bring them back to be released.
What's the option be if you don't, if you don't do either of the or what you just said?
And really don't have.
There is not another option?
No.
We have no way to control the cats based upon laws and regulations and the help we get now from the Humane Society.
I mean, didn't at one time we talked about, we were gonna see about some farmers outside of town? They needed some barn cats if we caught some, giving them to them.
I don't remember something like that.
If you guys have contacts who are farmers and you wanna check with them, I mean, I think you definitely could, it's um.
This is a problem that's gonna be ongoing, I think, because the fact is.
Well, means it'll get worse.
It's gonna get worse all the time.
Yeah. Before, but long as it's gonna be forty-two hundred cat population and not very many human.
Not nearly.
Well, that's, that's where the spay neutering project would come in. That's where the spaying and neutering project would come in. Um, Juliet, the Humane Society is checking to see if Columbia would let us partner with them to see what it would cost us to collect cats to have them spayed and neutered. We would have to release them back into our community, but like I said, at least they wouldn't be able to procreate and add to our cat population.
Yeah, that'll help with that, but it won't help with the nuisance of the cats urinating and digging.
Yeah, I think that's the biggest thing.
Problem, I understand it's gonna slow down the increase in, in those animals, but the complaint is what they're doing to their property, they don't wanna cat over there, you know, it's uh, I mean, I agree, I understand, I understand that, but there's gonna be some sort of cost associated with that as well.
There would be, and it'd be just like when we were taking cats to the Humane Society, it was twenty bucks a head when we would take them. They could cost up to twenty dollars if I'm spayed and neutered. But um, there's, I don't know what other options we really have with, with the cats.
Right.
Now, we do have, um, if, if a homeowner calls in and they know it's their neighbor's cat, the neighbor, like, the cat can be identified and it's the neighbor's cat, we can still issue citations and stuff if it's an owned cat. The problems we're gonna have is if it's a community cat. And that's gonna be your, your cats who don't have.
Just on the side of, why don't we have community dogs?
I don't know.
What, dog running wild?
Yeah, I mean.
Don't let me, don't let me hear that, I don't let mine loose.
Well, what I'm saying is, we don't allow community dogs, why do we allow community cats?
Well, I mean, we're not.
They get, dogs get picked up and taken to the, to the pound if they're found running loose.
But we can't do that with cats.
But we can't do that with cats. And I don't know if it's because cats are way more prolific than dogs.
A free range animal or what, I don't understand. The cats and the chickens have been too major by the time. The time here, I don't know, I mean, so we're, you're gonna get back some, but then we have to release them back, right? We catch it and then we get where they caught it from, we gotta take it back and let it loose.
Can we, can they be released in the city, at the city limits? It says inside town.
Then we're responsible for that cat, for the cats, in a sense, aren't we? If we take them over there and do that, and we got twenty of our cats out here.
Well, uh, she said citizen can do it.
The citizen, the city can't, we are not allowed.
Agreement, and that agreement would mean that they'll take, allow us to bring so many to spay or neuter, but we gotta share the cost of that.
So, if a citizen takes it over there, what does it cost them to have it done to?
From what I understand, nothing.
It's free.
Just their expense for taking it over.
And that's up to them.
And bringing it back.
Doesn't mean I bring it back, to turn it red.
But the, the Humane Society will not charge them for the procedure.
Do we still have that little old lady going around feeding cats all over town?
Uh, I'm sure that we have several citizens that are feeding.
Do we have ordinance against feeding feral cats?
I do not believe that we do have ordinance against feeding.
That might be.
Maybe we need.
To check into that.
Maybe we need to check into that.
Don't we have an ordinance that says you can only have so many animals per your property size? Does cats fall in that?
Yeah, but they gotta be yours, I mean, they gotta be, you can have four total animals, period. But if they're, nobody's claiming it, I mean, it's not their cat.
I mean, a lot of people get cats and they just love doing it, it's not theirs.
Is there, is there any possibility that if you own a cat inside the city limits of Central, it must be spayed or neutered anyhow?
So, we do charge more to license your cat if it is not spayed.
Why don't you raise that significantly?
So, there's a state statute that limits how much we can charge to license.
So, what's the one?
I don't know the answer to that.
Well, that's the only problem we have right now, it's just that one little area.
That we hear about, that we hear about.
I would say a fraction of the cats in town are licensed.
Are licensed?
Regardless of these.
Yeah, a fraction, a very small amount, like you said. All right, so.
Make an ordinance that there's no cats in the city limits, period. That would stop the problem.
My cat lives inside my, he doesn't go out.
You see some of these people, these animals that they have, period, and it's, it's concerning that they can't take care of the animal, let alone children, probably would be my guess, but, so, it's concerning. So, that being said, you're gonna check on an ordinance? Problem with an ordinance is, you know, it's just something else to try to enforce, it may be not, it's not enforceable. So, I mean, that's, I think, what you gotta look at, if anything, it's, and you might look to see if any other cities we know of at work, anywhere, not just in proximity of Missouri, have dealt with this kind of thing and what did.
I, I know that we're not the only city out there that struggles with stray cats.
Yeah, I just didn't know somebody had some sort of a program that worked of some sort, I'm curious to see what that was, other than euthanize them as you get them.
I did, I did ask Sandy to ask that question with the Humane Society also, if they have any times of had any luck in handling their, their stray cat relationships.
Yeah, okay, so, we'll hear back on those two things then, what we find, what she finds and are any ordinances we can put in place to manage the cats. Uh, that moves us to, I had no email from anybody, uh, this week, uh, bringing up anything. Moves us to five consent agenda. I would, uh, take a motion to approve, A, Board of Alderman meeting minutes, B, Public Works and Utility Committee, uh, Committee meeting minutes, C, General Government Public Safety Committee meeting minutes, D, the collector's report, E, the treasurer's report, F, the activities report, and G, the financial report, uh, all in one motion or as separated as said, and so forth.
I make a motion, we approve the consent agenda.
Have a second. Um, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Consent agenda passes. Moves out, uh, item six, accounts payable over two hundred and fifty dollars.
I make a motion, we approve the accounts payable, the total of five hundred and ninety-five thousand, five hundred and twenty-five dollars and forty cents.
Second.
Second.
I, you're too slow, uh, you know, first and the second to approve the accounts payable over two hundred and fifty dollars, all in favor? All opposed. It passes. It moves the action agenda, finance. A is wastewater reimbursement request number twelve, label number eleven for D N R. And what do we have here? This, is this, this isn't an ordinance, is it?
No, no, it's just Bartlett and West had, um, turned in, um, a couple of invoices for them and it's Martin's second half of their request that they didn't have signed off on, or the request that they had turned in last month.
Is there any dollar amount that they're asking, really asking for?
I think it's page thirty-four.
This is different than a, from the, you know, the one we had here the other night, this is something that came up new, I'll take it.
So, this is, it would be Bartlett's work that they've done in the last month, and Martin's is for work completed on a water project. They just didn't have all their paperwork.
Well, you see, that's complete pretty much, isn't it?
Yes, on the water project, yes, and they're getting started on wastewater.
Bartlett's asking for five thousand and eighty-three forty-seven seven.
Yes.
So, if we're probably, are we in good shape, what we budgeted for Martin, were in line with what we thought?
Yeah, it's what was budgeted.
And he's completed it, so, well, they have.
So, the, so the, the two together, cumulative of five hundred and seventy-nine, five sixty-eight, and thirty-two cents. Martin would be five hundred and seventy-four thousand, five hundred and twenty-four dollars and eighty-five cents. Uh, and, uh, fishing fees for Bartlett and West would be five thousand and forty-three dollars and forty-seven cents.
And then I'm also seeing for C N S on here, and it looks like we're looking at a payment of five hundred and then four thousand, five hundred and twenty, five hundred and then four thousand, five hundred and twenty-four dollars and eighty-five cents on that one.
Yes, that's what I got here, that's Martin's.
Gotcha, uh-huh.
And then the five thousand and forty-three dollars and forty cents, that's five hundred and seventy-nine thousand, five sixty-eight, thirty-two.
Right.
Of eligible costs incurred during this period.
And then.
So, what do we do? Now, they request that, what do we have to do? Do you run one?
You guys will just vote on whether or not I can.
You're gonna put it, yeah, we're gonna have to, yeah, there'll be a motion the whole night in the next meeting.
There, it'll be an ordinance to, well, it'll be an ordinance to pass, great.
And then I have to go to D N R, I won't let you for, just like we did with Fisher?
Now, we have passed an ordinance, you guys are just going to vote on whether or not I can, yeah, to approve it, to send to the D N R for reimbursement. If you agree that they did this work and we need to pay it.
So, should I entertain a motion for that at this point? I entertain a motion to pay these two combined for the total we discussed of five hundred and seventy-nine thousand, five hundred and.
Sixty-eight thirty-two?
Yes. Yes. I have a motion, have a second?
Second.
Have a second, Alderman Rogers, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Passes. All right, that moves us to B, Citizens' trade wastewater treatment plan, approval for reimbursement question number nine.
And that one is for?
Forty-three.
That one is just for Bartlett and West, an amount of one thousand three hundred and forty-four dollars. And for construction authorization and the work that they've done in the last month on the wastewater project.
Okay, where are they at in their bid for us originally?
Where's that number at?
It's on page forty-three, forty-three.
Forty-three, forty-four. So, what's a Schmidt irrigation?
That was the first one that you just approved.
They're under, they're under, they're under Martin. Schmidt, is that right?
No, they're, they're on their own, so they're part.
It wasn't than that.
Oh, it broke out, didn't it?
That wasn't, that broke down.
Yeah.
The Schmidt irrigation was not on the, it was Martin and, uh, construction phase engineering is what we just approved for five hundred and seventy-nine fifty-six, just five sixty.
Most of that is, is, uh, the Schmidt, so you see it. I'm sorry, I got that backwards, microphone's in my way.
Schmidt irrigation says change order at the top of ours.
Yeah, you're right, I apologize, that five hundred, that goes to Martin's in the other half, and that's on the wastewater side. For the pumps and stuff that they've gotten in.
So, what's all this?
The second one is the work that, uh,
This is for the.
Bartlett has been doing.
For the slaker?
Yes, that's what they've been working on on the water side.
So, all this that we're doing now to purchase a new one and all this, this is they're, they're billing us for that?
Oh, oh, yeah.
So, what is this change order for Schmidt irrigation? There's two pages of change order. On pages thirty-six and thirty-seven. That all goes into that five hundred pounds.
But it's not on the request.
It's not on the requests?
Yeah. So, we just approved.
We just approved Martin and then the Bartlett West. Cause it says on, uh, page thirty-five, price for this change order is fifty-three forty, four hundred, thirty-seven sixty-seven, so.
Well, it's, it's not included in the request, though, I mean, the paperwork's in there, but.
So, Bartlett and West.
I'll have to call them.
That's right, so if they're not requesting it, then that's on them.
Right.
That's right.
So, I will make a note to, I'll have Matthew talk to Blake tomorrow and I'll.
So, what was approved was Martin and the Bartlett. And if, and somewhere or another that, that's wrong, then.
They'll have to resubmit.
They have to resubmit completely, and, and, and give it, uh, an idea what the document on Schmidt.
Yeah, I'd like to know what all this, all this change order stuff is.
Who does the change order belong?
Schmidt Irrigation and Pump Services.
Thank you, sir.
So, we need a motion now for Bartlett and West, maybe thirteen hundred and forty-four dollars?
Yes.
Are they, are they, are they completed their investigation, or is this just?
They had to do surveying, that's where they did all the surveying, yeah, surveying stuff done to make sure that the elevations and that the, that the, uh.
Well, this one that you're looking at right now is for their coordination with D N R for the slaker options, working with us and researching vendors in our area.
We're taking bids now, we're taking bids again.
That, that's what this is.
That's our bid now?
Yep, we got one back today, but they got, they got one back.
It closed today at five, so we'll be looking at those tomorrow.
I'll make a motion, we approve thirteen hundred and forty-four dollars to Bartlett and West.
Okay.
The first and the second to approve the thirteen hundred and forty-four dollars for Bartlett West, I have B, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Passes, thank you, moves us to legal. A, approving the mayor's signed three-year contract with Premier Pyrotechnics to supply fireworks for the Fourth of July fireworks show. When we talked about where we get to this count and all of that, uh.
And we've always done this on a three-year deal or a one-year deal?
I can't find that we have done the three-year deal.
I didn't think we ever did it on a three-year deal, but.
It's generally been a one-year, respectfully.
One year, or we did do it one year?
One year, it's always been a one year.
Been an, since two thousand and six or so, it's been an annual discussion in this room, respectfully.
Yeah.
So, if you guys would like to go to the three-year option and say if I.
Well, this is the same people we do for the last, ever, for the last three or four or five years, isn't it?
For, for quite some time, yeah.
Last three, I know.
And we have.
What if we have like an issue with COVID, where things were shut down for a couple of years, and they, I mean, you know what I mean?
I mean, they, I know that they worked with us over that, we still had our show though during COVID, just not outside, but.
Well, a few things we can probably distance and do, and you know, we can't swing to cool, but.
And this is the company that we have, that we re-up our insurance with, and we have the fireworks training so that our city employees can still set off the fireworks instead of having to hire it out.
Right, exactly, that's why we have a pyrotechnician to oversee it, to where we might pay them to shoot it off. Cause I'm sure the price is what we're buying in there.
I move that we approve the three-year contract for fireworks with Premier Pyrotechnics.
Second.
I have a first and a second to approve the three-year contract, uh, for Pyrotechnics, Premier Fire, so all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Passes, thank you. That moves us to through the mayor signing the li-h-e, uh, supplier agreement.
Okay, so what this is, is when we have some of our residents who need assistance applying or paying for their utility bills, um, this program is the only program that we're not signed up in, and we are the only city that has not signed up in it at, um, C N C A. But what this does is when we have residents who sign up for this program, instead of sending us the check, they're sending the resident the check.
Oh.
So, by signing this agreement, the state will send us the check instead of the resident.
So, we can get paid, for sure.
Yes.
I'll make a motion, we approve the mayor's signing the L I H E, eight-page supplier agreement.
Second.
I have a first and a second, uh, all in favor?
Aye.
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 All opposed? All righty. This moves aside my purchasing, approve fifty thousand dollars emergency spending for transformers, which we talked about the other night, about the doctor who came up first to get ahold of some, some transformers that we would have to have a special meeting and we would give them the ability up to fifty thousand dollars to spend, if y'all remember, uh, the other day. So, that's what that discussion was about, that was last week, but that's what that discussion was about, uh, you were gone, but, uh, because when it comes up, if you don't get them, somebody gets them and they're gone, you know, they're off the ship.
So, these are in stock right now, all we got is these?
They are, but like, Matt Fedler, if I got a phone call from Arkansas Electric a week and a half ago or so, offering us ten transformers, unfortunately, they were the wrong voltage, but say something like that were to happen, they're coming up in the next year at any point in time.
And the G E ones are more available, but they're another fifteen hundred dollars higher. They're not thirty-five hundred, they're five thousand dollars a piece. When we were paying a thousand originally, last year or two, you know, for all this started, eleven hundred. So, it gives them the ability in the moment to purchase those and get those without them being offered somebody else.
We would definitely let you know that that had happened.
I'll make a motion, we approve the fifty thousand dollars in emergency spending for new transformers.
Second.
Second.
I have a first and a second, uh, to approve the emergency spending of fifty thousand dollars for transformers, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Aye.
It passes. That moves to item ten, the mayor, I, I don't have any, anything, really. See administrator, I'm looking for him to pay.
Yep, been working a lot on budget this month, or in January, and this month, but.
Hope we see attorney, which we will go over, I know that the slaker thing is going on, we've got the, just an update on, on what would be, from her side, that probably would be that she's on in, in communication about getting the mediation done with, uh, the, uh, the slaker provider, original slaker provider, and us getting to a point that we can get something done, uh, and getting us an answer, uh, I don't know if we've had one yet on Fisher, if they're officially on the job of the jury, we don't know that yet, and that's being found out as well. So, both those are in, in the works, just to give you kind of an update from that side of it, the city attorney's probably working on for us, and is working on, as I know. That moves to thirteen, the city clerk.
Uh, not a lot, been working, looking at the budget, business licenses, getting those cut up. Uh, election coming up soon.
Yeah.
Uh, lots of meetings, going, just a couple of days of training next month for spring institute for city clerks, so I'm excited to.
Barrow training?
I train's probably not on the list, but I'll dumb check it.
And if, if we could, it would be nice when we have people that go to these trainings to, especially our leadership, that come to the, the meeting, to give us feedback of what they got out of the meeting, how beneficial was it, those kind of things, like we went with M M L or, or you go that. It'd be good to hear that back, to understand what did you get out of it, you think it's a waste of money, you, I mean, if you get two, two good things out of it, I mean, it's great, right? But I think it gives everybody an update, because one of the things that when we were transitioning was, people were saying, people were out of the office and going to meetings and what were they doing, you know, what, what, are we just signing up for meetings and be gone? I don't believe we do that, but also, I think we need to be inspecting what curriculum was when we got that, out of it, right? So, we do that, you know, if you, if you go to something for police officers, you know, whatever, maybe, it'd be good to get feedback on you for, you know, administrators, uh, or, or whatever. So, I, I think that that's something we'd have to do, right? Does that make sense?
Yeah.
Meetings are good, they need to be beneficial, because every minute out, away from the desk, out of the office, just piles up something that really needs to be worthwhile, I think.
I was a time management class, spent two days there one time, having to prove your time, and at the end, they asked what was the biggest thing you got out of the meeting? I said, out of this, I did realize that if I hadn't been here the last two years, two days, it'd been the best time I've had, you know, I could have had when I did the meeting. And, uh, God didn't like it, but it's true. Anyway, that being said, now, as may arise, I do have one thing, I'll bring you back up to speed, I was talking a bit about, uh, to Tara before the meeting. Uh, Don Rogers had called me and, you know, he'd asked, inquired about, you know, doing the inspections. It's only five or six a year, um, it's probably gonna be four thousand dollars by the time you get, uh, the class, travel and everything else, it's probably five thousand dollars expense, um, the state provides that, there's a suspicion, anyway. So, it was something that, that in the past, the city administrator had asked, Lynn had asked him to consider doing that. I don't know what motivation was, maybe things were different at that time, how that, got inspections, got that, that kind of thing. So, he called to let me know that whatever. that whatever we decided, he, he, he wasn't one way or the other, he'd be glad to do it for the city, and if not, based upon the cost, he was fine with that, so, that was the other thing he gave me, and what he mainly wanted to tell me was, he had, he'd taken the pyrotechnician's certification class, he's certified as a pyrotechnician for the City Centraia, which you have to have to shoot these fireworks off, and, uh, he did not have any desire to be recertified this year, he, he didn't wanna go to the April, um, meeting, and, I mean, the training, and, and get recertified, so he wanted to give me a notice that we could have, have somebody do that, or make sure we have people that could do that, so, those were the things I got, as may arise.
Did he have to tell you what the expiration date was on certification, because when I spoke with Premier, I thought they said that those certifications were good for two or three years?
I have no idea, we can find that out, but we know that somebody's gonna be certified, was there anybody else, did Demi get certified, or not?
I, I, I thought that I was told that Demi was certified.
I thought he was going to go to class, we need to find that out, from this, we need your action, I hope we can find out that, make sure we're covered on that end of it, that we don't, you know, we don't miss that training, uh, so, that's, I think he told me it was April fifteenth, if I was correct in what he was telling me, had to step out, it was listed, so.
If, if we don't find somebody that does this, don't we have to hire, contract somebody out, that's two or three or four thousand dollars to contract them out to come here and do that anyway? I think it, I don't remember, but you remember?
You'd have to, I mean.
You have, or not have fireworks.
Yeah, our insurance won't allow us, but.
Change caps, we could change.
Unless we have certified somebody supervising this, taking responsibility.
So, we need to do that, I guess, don't we?
It might scare, scare somebody else out, too.
Americans shoot them off, even, certified.
Um, while we're on the topic of the, the fireworks, I'm gonna be at the park board meeting Friday, they got moved to Friday, and I was asking them if they had set up their, um, fireworks, or their July fourth celebration, they usually do in the park, is the board still wanting to have it the same, like, July fourth on a Tuesday this year, last year we did it on a Saturday, instead of going with what July fourth actually fell on.
Well, I think one of the things we talked about allows our people to have, our workers.
That was the biggest complaint at the fire department, because they're out all day.
They want to spend time with their family on the floor, but they never have for the last ten years, and it gives people a chance to, that, as long as you know ahead of time, you can plan for it, so it's like you're gonna have a celebration the fourth, but that also gives you the, the flexibility to go somewhere else.
A lot of guys do it, not on the fourth, they do it the weekend before, the weekend after.
So, I don't have a problem with doing it, it, it should be combined with.
I thought we talked about it last year, that it was.
To do that because of the.
It was after Wednesday, went to the next weekend, and if it was Wednesday and before, went to the weekend before.
That's what we talked about, just like you do holiday pay, right, make the holiday days off, so, yeah.
Okay.
Yep, so you might bring that up, that we wanna kind of keep it in that kind of timeframe of when we set it up, where it kind of coincides with how you look at, at holiday days off, makes sense? Good, good point, um, so, let's all have, I would take a motion to adjourn.
There's your adjourn.
Second.
Have a first and a second to adjourn, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? We stand adjourned, thanks.